Order at six o'clock. We got a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda. It's Amanda.
There a second?
I'll second.
Alright, motion by Amanda, second by Courtney. Need to add parent pre-K request. Probably it's a new business. Did everyone get additional materials? Okay.
Yes.
And any other additions or changes? Alright, Eric Nun, all those in favor of approving the agenda with the addition? Say aye or wave your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. New board member appointment. I take it Jody's not coming?
I don't see her.
I'm sorry. I missed general public comment, but there's nobody here.
I thought she was coming. She had messaged me earlier because she was thinking it was at five o'clock.
Okay.
I can shoot her a message and see if she's gonna join us.
That'd be great.
It did come out in the Middletown news today that we were looking for a member, so if it doesn't work out with Jody, we may get another, we may, even if it does, we may get another letter of interest, so. The time for submission and the time when the newsletter came out were too, too far apart for when we discussed it last.
And I'm not sure. I think it would be better if, you know, she was here, but I'm not even sure. She did submit a letter of interest. Or at least to Chris.
She did submit a letter?
Yeah, yeah, she sent an email.
An email. I think it'd be good if, if she was here to talk, but I guess we can, we can always well, let's get to the consent agenda and then we can just come back to that if, if Ryan can get ahold of her to find out if she's coming or not. So.
Yeah, I sent a message. I'll let you know if I hear anything back.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. We have the minutes for May 5th, June 2nd, and the June 8th Carousel Meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
There a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Meredith, second by Amanda. Any changes?
It was Ryan, sorry.
Oh, did you? Oh, I'm sorry. There any changes to the minutes? I did see one change I wanted to make, and that's on the May 5th minutes. Or the policy part of it. We had removed, if I can find it here. We had removed the two policies that were on there. Because they actually didn't make it through committee. It was F6 and F11. So I just like to remove those because I think we did change it in the agenda, but I don't know if. Alright, any other changes to, to the minutes? Eric Nun, all those in favor approving the minutes? Say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
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 I get, motion passes. Okay. I see Jody logged on. Thank you, Jody, for, for coming tonight and and thank you for your interest. So I guess if you, if you don't mind, if you wouldn't mind, you know, just introducing yourself and you know, just telling the board why you would like to be here.
Sure. I apologize. I have a terrible signal. I'm in Maine right now. It's my teenage daughter and I'm kind of stealing internet from a hotel here. So I live in Middletown Springs. I've lived there for about 10 years. Hi Liz. I've worked at both Wells Village School as an assistant pre-K teacher and also at Middletown and a couple of different aid positions through the years. We are a foster family, so I have three birth children. One adopted daughter and three foster sons that will probably be adopted at some point. My kiddos range in age from the oldest is 16, the youngest is three. And through the years, we've also fostered children that are now adopted by families in Middletown and are kind of grow up in our head and at our school. So I just, you know, I always have kids in the school. Like right now I have three children at Middletown, so. I guess that's kind of where my interest lies.
Alright, thank you. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I'm sorry, Eric. I didn't. I didn't under, I didn't hear what you said.
Oh. I just asked the board what what the pleasure of the board was.
Do we want to make a motion to appoint Jody for the remainder of this year? Is that I think the order of business?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
There a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. You've got a lot of seconds.
Okay. Thank you. Motion by Meredith, second by Ryan. Are there any further questions? For Jody? Or discussion?
I want to thank you, Jody. I really appreciate you stepping up. I think you're going to be a great addition.
Oh, sure. I'm, I'm excited. I've, I've always kind of thought about it before, but you know, it was never quite this season. I always had very high maintenance kids in the house or something like that and but we've, we've kind of settled a little bit. Still super busy, but but I mean, it's, it's settled enough that I think that it's something I can manage.
Great, thank you. Alright, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Jody. Thank you again, and you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. See, you're on vacation. And also our, our board retreat is on the 21st. So I hope you can make that. That will probably be our first in-person meeting since March of last year, so. And, and it's going to revolve around, you know, board work and goal setting and stuff like that, so. It, oh, it's, it's also at 4:30, so hopefully that's something you can do and you can make. If
So that's the 21st of July and where, where is it?
It'll probably be in Middletown Springs. At the school.
Okay. Okay.
And you'll, and so this, this appointment is for until next year, March of next year. So you'll, if you want to continue, you'll have to rerun to finish out the term. And you know, again, if, if you want to stay for the meeting and weigh in, you can. But you can't, can't make, you can't vote on any motions until you've been to the, the town clerk and sign the oath, whatever it is they have you do.
Okay, and do I just do that at any time?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, okay.
And Jody, Jody Real Cook, it's Chris on the superintendent. I'm sorry, Jody. It's Chris on the superintendent. I will have you, myself, or Christine McGuinness, our admin assistant, reach out to you with information on getting your emails set up and as well as getting you the board member packet and all sorts of other information for you as well, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thanks. And welcome.
Thank you. So I'll probably just kind of listen in and I may lose a signal and be gone, so we'll see how it goes.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, approval of the warrants. You should have warrants 170, 172, and 179 in your packets. I'll go ahead and move the approval of these warrants. Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Ryan.
Second by Ryan. Any questions? Not all those in favor? Say aye. Raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
I have to watch out for those, those hands that are being raised. Alright, motion passes. Alright, superintendent's report.
Thanks, Eric. I have a few things just to kind of cover. And it's always interesting with Wells Springs, just with your meetings being so early in the month that I am, you know, it's kind of talking about end of the year stuff here in July, but just last time we met, we still were in session, so I, I do want to publicly thank the Wellspring Board, the administrations, staff, parents, students. Everyone for a great year. It was a, a very challenging year to say the least, you know, full, a lot of ups and downs, but there are a lot of successes. I think, you know, Middletown and Wells, you know, respect to COVID cases and in their schools, they're the best out of all our GRCSU schools for a variety of reasons, but like I said, it was a great year. I think that a lot of us will be glad to see that, you know, the year behind us and looking forward to next year. But like I said, I just want to publicly thank everyone for all their hard work, the cooperation, their patience, and understanding. I did say this in other meetings, you know, the students were phenomenal this year. I think Rick and Liz can echo that. I think that one of the things I found was their resiliency and the adaptability of our kids were second to none. It just, they just kind of rolled with the punches, just, you know, wore masks and did all the things they needed to do and just for them, it was just they're happy to be back at school and with their teachers, with their, their friends. So just, you know, I want to thank, thank the kids. You know, they made it, made it that much more enjoyable. It was a day-to-day thing, so, but thank you. Along the same lines, I also want to congratulate, you know, the Middletown and Wells Class 2021. While I, you know, my daughter is heading on to middle school and I jokingly say it's, it's not necessarily a milestone when you move to middle school, but it's a, it's a, you know, kind of a end of one journey, beginning of another, and I just want to congratulate those, both those classes on their, you know, graduation promotion and wishing the best of luck wherever they're headed, you know, for seventh grade and hopefully we'll see some of them in the future. So I just, I just want to publicly thank them all, congratulate them. I also wanted to say that to Liz and Rick, congratulations, nice ceremonies. Unfortunately, I think this year we had a bit of a backlog with, on the SU, we had all our graduation ceremonies at the same time, so we had four or five a night and Lisa and myself did our best to kind of divide and conquer. And I think on those nights, you know, Lisa, just because of proximity and geography, was able to attend, but from what I've heard from the community members and from Lisa, you know, he had some great ceremonies. I just want to say thank you to Rick and Liz and their staff for, for all their hard work and making sure that it was done in a safe manner in a way that would, you know, celebrate the kids' successes and get them ready to go for that step. The AOE Recovery Plan has been approved. I think that if you go to our GRCSU website, there is a link at the top that says AOE Education Recovery Plan. It is the full entire document. I think all 23 pages correctly, so they're all on there. So it is an exhaustive document. It's not necessarily light reading, but it's, it's all there for people to kind of take a look at. I know I just want to publicly thank Lisa and, you know, the staff and the team, you know, for all their hard work. Did a phenomenal job in getting this put together. I know that we did receive a lot of feedback from the state commending us on, you know, the work that we've done, the plans that we put forth for, you know, this fall and for the future, you know, and at least kind of talk about this a little bit more. You know, at the GRCSU meeting as well as next August, or in August meeting for Wells Springs. This is a malleable plan, which means that obviously as we made these plans, we're looking at, kind of guessing in terms of what things may look like, where, you know, but as we move into the fall, we move into winter, we collect more data, we get more feedback and we start to assess. Obviously, we will look at, you know, engaging in, you know, the curriculum cycle, making adjustments as needed. We will be involving stakeholders in that process. Moving forward in a variety of ways, whether it be through surveys, through feedback, through forums, but you know, a lot of people have input in terms of moving forward, how best to account our, our kids. But like I said, we're looking forward to a good start of a school year. And along that same line, a lot of the questions have been asked about what the school year will look like for next fall. As of 6/18 here on July 7th, right now, our plans are to return to normal, which would be, you know, so right now, that's where we'll be back in person. We will not have a remote option in place. If a family, you know, is still concerned about the, the health or safety of being of their child, there will be options. Obviously, you're on homeschool or moving elsewhere, but we will not have the same model that we had in place this year, so there will not be a remote option for, the expectation will be fully back to in-person learning. Obviously, things change between now and the end, start of the school year. We will quickly pivot and make some adjustments just like we did last year. But, and the questions have been asked about masks. As of right now, masks will not be mandatory. It will be an individual choice, an individual decision, so any staff member or student who feels, you know, that they want to wear a mask, will obviously will have the option to do so. So, and the last part was just a legislative update that I included in your packets. Just kind of give you a brief overview of what occurred in the last legislative session and some things just to kind of keep your eye on as we move forward. And I'll let Rick and Liz in their principal report talk about the summer academic enrichment programs, because they got some great things going on, so I'll let them kind of go more into detail in their report, so.
Any, any questions for the superintendent?
I would just like to say thank you, Chris, for sticking it out with us for the year. You, you're new to us too, and I said from the get-go, it was a really rough thing for you to jump into and we couldn't have done it without you hanging in there, so thank you for sticking it out with us.
Well, thanks, Amanda. We have great people to work with. That makes it easier, to be honest. Have a great team. We have great boards, you know, great staff, so it makes a lot, it makes it a lot easier. So thank you.
Excellent. Alright, what's the board's reports? Who'd like to go first?
I guess I can go first, so. Just to follow up with Chris. Once again, all the hard work done by parents, students, and staff. So we got through Middletown Springs, I guess, winter, winter chicken dinner. We made the, getting through the whole school year without a COVID coming into school, so. So kudos to everybody to make it work and, and Jackie. Appreciate having Jackie Becker as our nurse and great, great asset for both schools. And also to follow up, I, for the sixth grade celebration, we had to move pretty fast. It was going to be outside, but we moved it inside and to try to make it a little more special, we had the fifth graders, actually fourth and fifth graders speak to the, to the graduates, so I think that was probably one of the best things that it was just the, the speeches were very touching and it just added, I think, a whole new dimension of, of the celebration. Very proud how we ended up, the collaboration with the Up for Learning, with the AWAR grant, the work that we did with increasing the, the skills of the students for leadership, how to participate in meetings. I look forward to what that can do for next year with restorative practices. Having those, well, next year's sixth and fifth graders be leaders and, and help push those skills down into, into the lower grades. We had staff members attend the BEST Institute with a focus on restorative practices, which really it's about building strong communities and when there are issues in the community, have the skills, those foundational skills of circles and meetings where, where the students have the skills to discuss in a positive way and try to address any issue within the, the the school community. If nothing else, it's, it's come very evident when you have a strong social, emotional connection between students and staff and families, you have a much better, better school system. Stronger. So I look forward to what this will bring to Middletown Springs and also move it to Wells too. The summer program, we kicked off this week and I, I wish I had, had the picture of, of 20 kids. We got boards from the lumber mill just down below Middletown Springs and each kid had their own 12-foot board and they were measuring and getting ready to cut for birdhouses and, and it, to me, is one of the greatest things, K students up to fifth and sixth graders work on this, this project, the woodworking focus this week, so. With academics in the morning, should say connected academics. If nothing else, we need to try to reestablish just that passion for learning, community, and if we can get them from this five-week program to get them back, students back into the classroom feeling good about the school themselves and, and their peers and building, building those strong connections, so. Kudos to the staff for the summer program.
Thanks, Rick. Any questions? Alright, Liz.
Alright, good evening, everybody. This is going to sound really duplicated. I promise I wrote it down and none of us spoke before this meeting, but I also wanted to, to thank everybody, students, parents, community members, staff, just for getting through a really challenging year and every time we were faced with something, we just rose above. It was really enlightening to see. And I'm just so grateful to be a part of this community to, to, and to move forward, honestly. We also were very fortunate and I'd like to thank the MWA for allowing us to use the Tin Building during our graduation ceremony. We were ready to go either direction depending on the weather and 10 minutes before it rained, so we were really, really thankful to be able to bring in families outside and there were several people who made that happen in a short amount of time. And just the logistics into some of the guidance we had at that time was really, really helpful to have Mackenzie and Mr. Hathaway there to help and Lisa Wade was very instrumental in getting that all pulled off really quickly, so. Thank you, thank you. And it was a great ceremony, my first actual in-person ceremony, so it was nice to, to be able to go through that. I'm so thankful Lisa was there. And the students and, and Ms. Gallinari did a great job. It was really great. Really, really great to have everybody there and we do wish them well. Our summer program began yesterday as well. We have a smaller number this week, but as the weeks go on, enrollment grows as families are on vacation this week, some of them that we're anticipating coming back. So we have broken the students up into K2 learning community and a 3 through 6 learning community where they do the academic focus in the morning and then they're all together in the afternoon focusing on social, emotional learning and interactive play and just really trying to enjoy some of the things that they didn't get to do throughout the school year. And we have our pre-K students in the building Monday through Friday from 8 to 12. We've had a couple of kids this week. They look excited to be back and we're really thankful that we're able to, to bring that to them. And we look forward to kind of carrying that into the school year as well with our after-school program for pre-K continuing when we return in the fall. And we also very excited that our summer projects are underway and we have new flooring starting on Friday. We were not expecting that to happen until the end of July into August, so when projects are ahead of schedule, it's very, it relieves a lot of stress, I guess. So we're just fortunate to, to have that stuff with production being slow in lots of areas just kicking off this week. So we'll do a little bit of shuffling throughout the building, but we'll have new flooring in the front part of the building. We're replacing all of the carpets on the, the main floor and redoing the entryway from the playground entrance up until the, where the addition starts. So looking forward to that being done rather quickly with a, a vendor we used the last time we did a project, so. Other than that, we're just really excited to have kids back in the building. It was nice the last few days to hear them and see them, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Jody, you raised your hand?
Yes, and forgive me if this isn't the right time to be asking this question. I don't know the rules yet, but Elizabeth, you, you mentioned like a weekly pre-K time. Rick, does Middletown plan to do anything like that or they have plans for that, you know, maybe the couple of weeks prior to school or something like that? I'm just concerned because I have a three-year-old and he's never stepped foot in the building, you know, and all of my other children were very familiar with, with the school building before they started pre-K, so it wasn't that big of a deal, but you know, Danny won't know anyone. He's never been in the building. Do you think that that's something that you could do at your school?
We're going to have some type of open house just to get parents and kids in. I mean, it's important for them. Yeah, it's to have an introduction, see what the building's like, the classroom. Yeah, we're going to, we'll, we'll set something up.
Okay, and I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's possible at all, but you know, if it could be like once a week with the summer program, I don't know, like several times? I'm just, I don't know, I'm, I'm worried about even just one open house, if, if it's possible to do.
So Jody, just for clarification, we're, our program is only for students who had completed a year of preschool for us too, so we're doing the exact same thing. So when we get closer to the school year, there will be opportunities, part of the regulations that we have to offer some type of orientation. But you bring up a great point. You bring up a good point.
Yeah, I'll talk with Christina, but, but yeah, at this point, it's, it's pretty much, you know, we're doing the same thing.
Alright, Ryan, your, your hand is up. I don't know if I missed that or if you had.
No, I'm sorry. I left it up by accident. I'm
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Since you were talking about projects, I don't know, maybe now's a good time to talk about Facilities Committee really quick. Chris, or?
Yeah, that's fine, Eric. Yep.
And I think the, the point is, is just to, to schedule a time where, you know, we could all meet and it And I think the, the point is, is just to, to schedule a time where, you know, we could all meet and it, of course, George isn't here and George, what, what, what we did was is we left George on the facilities committee and if he decided he didn't want to continue, Amanda said she would, she would do it, but, um, so, uh, I guess we just need to sit, sit down and figure out a time to get together. And I know there's a lot going on in July, so.
So Eric, would it make sense if I would just send out like a doodle poll with, uh, dates in, um, July and just see when the, uh, most members can make it?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. So I'll do that tomorrow morning if that's all right?
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, we don't have to do, we don't have to set all that anything tonight. I just wanted to bring it up. So, okay. Uh, thank you. All right. Uh, so if there's no other questions for our principals?
I have one question. Sorry.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Liz, the, the carpet that you mentioned, are we re-carpeting Wells or are they getting, um, like a different type of flooring that's not carpeting?
So, um, all classrooms that have carpet, that some of them have carpet and then a tile space depending on if they've got a sink in their classroom or not. Uh, we are replacing at this point, just the carpets. We've looked at carpet tile, um, so that if it's a two by two tile, so if something happens, we can replace that piece instead of the entire flooring. Um, and then we will be doing actual tile, um, in the entryway. The nurse's office is getting one of those like floating floor faux wood, floors for, uh, sterilization. Um, Jackie felt that that was best. And then depending on what, um, we can get, we might shift that, um, to some of the main office as well. Um, so what we're looking to do carpet, we, we redid the upstairs last year. So we're looking to match that, um, as best as possible down on the main floor. Does that answer your question, Amanda?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Finance. So, um, everyone should have gotten, uh, expenditure or the monthly financial reports. I actually had some questions on this, but I'll, I'll just go ahead and email Lewis, Chris. I, instead of dragging him in here, honestly. Unless anyone else had questions or concerns. The revenue report or the expenditure report. All right. All right, moving on to personnel. Contracts. Did everyone receive the revised contract? Yes, no? I would assume so. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
I just had one question for the, um, for Wells. This is Ryan. The summer program has two nurses listed. Are they just both part-time or?
Yeah. So the nurses are, um, sharing coverage amongst Wells and Middletown and they are, um, not there every day. They're on, you know, as needed and checking in and such. So they're just sharing, um, based on other duties that they have, their skills with us.
And I do believe Liz, that's they're both not available. That's why they're splitting it. Cause on some days Claire is not available. The other days Mary, Mary will be there. Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
And it's just, just for the summer?
Yes.
Just for Wells Village School?
No, um, they are available for Middletown as well.
Okay.
Almost like an on-call if there was a, a need or a question, you know, outside of an emergency where they would follow the expected procedures.
Okay. Uh, I had a question for, Barb Gallinari. Last month, um, we approved the extracurricular for, uh, for just a teaching position. Then she's on here for a substitute. How does that work?
So that was a conversation had with Lewis. So the contract that you put through last, last time was for her to do the four hours of academics every day. And she was to stay in the afternoon. It's at a different rate because the academics, that, that contract was specifically for, um, the academic portion of the day. So if they needed coverage in the afternoons where they're not doing the same types of activities in academics, it's, um, just a different rate of pay based on what they're, they're doing.
Okay. These, are these all grant-funded positions? They are, aren't they? That's what I thought. Um, and for summer sports program. I didn't know we had a summer sports program.
This is a gentleman that Angie found that's coming to do like skills and drills for a couple of different, a couple of different times. So it's not an actual summer program. It's the kids who are registered are going to be able to learn a few things from this gentleman as far as I understand it.
Okay. Sounds like fun. Any other questions? None. Well, motion would be in order to approve the contract recommendations as presented.
This is Ryan. I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
This is Amanda. I'll second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Amanda. There's no further questions. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand.
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. New business. Uh, board meeting and return to in-person hybrid. So, uh, next month we plan on, uh, returning in person with the hybrid option. And I believe that's all figured out, correct, Chris? Where PEG TV can come and?
Real quick. So PEG TV informed us today that due to short staffing, they will not. Uh, so I spoke with Greg and that shouldn't be an issue because the same setup that we use here in the conference room, uh, with the camera and then with the Google Meet, we'll still be able to do it. So Greg will have a, um, a second camera that can travel and then the portable mics that we can set up. So we can do that, um, for our Wells Springs meetings and then we'll just send that to PEG. Uh, we're working, Greg is trying to work with PEG in training some of our tech, uh, our tech guys so that they can kind of, um, I guess act as just a consultant or let's say a mercenary, but just as a, uh, they'll, they'll work at night for PEG while they're recording our meetings. So, uh, so we're trying to work with, with PEG on, you know, kind of kill two birds with one stone, that we can have all of our meetings recorded, uh, by, you know, the PEG TV representative, but we still will have a plan in place. So for next month, we'll be fine. I know Greg said that, uh, the, the camera that we have here in the conference room has the, uh, 3D microphone, uh, and then we'll just have to make sure a screen setup, but Greg will work with, um, the building principals and tech, just make sure everything's ready to go. So we'll be okay for the next month.
Okay.
Cause I'm kind of lonely up here in the conference room to be honest. So I'm just, it's ridiculous. I'm sitting here by myself, but so.
All right. Well, it sounds like a plan and I, I assume that it's not astronomical for the equipment.
No, it's actually the, the equipment that we need anyways. We should have a, a couple of backup cameras. So Greg's fine with that. So we, we, we're all in place. So that will be, uh, just, it will not be Wells Springs. It'll just be more for under the tech budget.
Okay.
Um, can I, can I, uh, I know it's, uh, sometimes we don't have an August meeting, particularly after a retreat. Um, I know since we have it on the third week. Is that right? Is it the third week or the fourth week? At any rate, it just, I don't know if that's something you want to consider.
Yeah, we can definitely talk about that.
Actually, it's the first week. Yeah. So.
Yeah. It, we could talk about that. Yeah, we can talk about that at the end of the meeting because, um, there's something else I wanted to add to that as well.
Okay.
So, but, uh, you know, aside from our, our retreat in a few, in a couple of weeks. Oh yeah, it's coming up quick. Um, which will be in person. Um, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll have this other, um, in-person hybrid option, which will allow people to, um, to do both. So, so if there's no, uh, questions regarding that, I just wanted, um, just to bring that to everyone so that, uh, we can, clarify all that. Wells Springs student achievement data. This is why Lisa's here tonight. Thank you, Lisa, for coming.
My pleasure. Nice to see everybody. Um, I apologize for not getting this information out to you earlier. We, um, our new district data manager just started on July 1st. And so I was lucky enough to have support in pulling together this information for you today, but we didn't have a lot of time to do it in with the holiday. Um, so we were, we're up to the wire, but I will send this information out after the meeting. Um, uh, so you have a copy of it that you can see on your own. Um, and as always, I'm happy to take questions. If people want to call me or email me, I can, um, have follow-up conversation with anybody if, if needed. Um, I'm just going to share my screen for those who are on the call and for, um, let me just, should show up in just a second. Nope. One second. Try again. Okay. I'm going to make that a little bigger. Can everybody see or anybody who can see, can see it now? Okay. So I know, uh, Chris had shared questions about data. I was at one meeting when it was raised also. Um, I think in particular cohort data was something that people were interested in seeing, um, for like one group of kids over time. Um, so what we pulled together was we pulled together, um, for the students who just graduated, a historical data set so that you can look at their progress over time, um, and, and just get a chance. And because Sback was interrupted, um, due to COVID for an entire period of time and you, you, there is no data available. Um, instead what we did was we used the MAP data, um, which we were able to administer twice last year, um, and in the fall, winter and spring this year as well. So they only had one missed test window for just a third of the year. Um, and it goes back to first grade. So you have a really nice, long view of the student performance. Um, Sback only starts in third grade. So this gives you kind of a broader, a broader context. Um, what you will see in the data, um, is that it is, it's combined. It's Wells Springs data. So data for both schools combined. Um, and I included information about class size. For those of you who have been on the board for a while, I, I apologize. I know this is repetitious for some of you, but for those of you who are a little newer, um, the Vermont Agency of Education restricts us from sharing data that is for a group of students that is 11 or smaller. Um, so we're not allowed to share that data publicly. Um, we can, uh, discuss it in more depth in executive session and give you some more information in executive session, but the reason for that is that they don't want, um, ever to, there to be a situation where an individual student could potentially be identified, um, by data. And in some of our smaller schools like Wells and Middletown, where your cohorts are incredibly small, towns are small, people know each other. Um, you could have one student in a subgroup or two students in a subgroup, um, something that again, just could be individually identifiable. So the agency sets that, that limit on us. And I have the attendance data, uh, or the population that was tested, which is slightly different, um, for Middletown and Wells for these years, for this group of children, um, just so you can see why it is that we're unable to share that information by class, but we can share it across the two schools. So that's, that's what I have. And, um, I had spoken with Eric earlier also and said that again, we can, once we get back to in-person meetings, um, if people want to, to have more in-depth conversations in executive session where you can see some of these things. Um, and we can discuss them in more detail that I'm happy to do that. Um, so there are three charts included. Um, the first is the Wells Springs cohort historical data for mathematics. That is in your top left corner. Um, I wish that I could zoom on this, but it doesn't really give me, let me see. I can. Nope. It's not letting me zoom while I'm presenting. Um, so, uh, what you see here is the RIT score. That's what MAP uses as their like scaled score for students. Um, it's a continuum score. So you expect to see progress over time for students. Um, and all at the bottom are the test windows. So for this group, um, starting in the fall of 2016, it's actually the fall of 2015, but the 20, 2016 school year, 2015, 2016 school year. Um, you can see their data in mathematics. The red is the norm. So that is what MAP sets as the norm. They, they nationally norm this with thousands and thousands of children all across the country every year. Um, they do, or they do norming every few years, um, on a national basis. Um, and then they use that to compare the performance of our students to the national norms. Um, and so you can see the trajectory in math is very comparable to the national norms, um, pretty close all the way through up until the pandemic, which are the last three, um, dots on this map. Um, and then on the top right of the screen is the same information, but it's for reading instead of mathematics. So again, the red are the national norms, the blue, um, are the Wells Springs norms, um, all the way through from the 2015, 2016 school year to the present. And on the bottom left, you have their language usage scores. Um, and again, you have the, the national norms and then you have the Wells Springs norms, um, all the way through. Language testing doesn't start until, um, second grade. And so there's no data available for first grade just because the test isn't administered to students who are that young. Um, and also I should say that for reading and math, there's a different test given in first grade than there is in second grade. Um, and you see a slight discrepancy in the scores. The scores look higher in first grade than they do in second. Um, we see that very consistently with the data because in first grade, the computer will read the test to the child. And in second grade, it expects the child to read the test to themselves. Um, and so there's a, a gap there which, which indicates just readiness for reading at that level of like test directions and, um, those kinds of pieces. So, um, that's a, that's a trend that we see in our data across the grades and is very typical with MAP testing. Um, okay. I'm just, I'm going to stop there and I'll take any questions that people have. Um, I know Eric and I had talked to you about if there are specific questions that people have with data, um, that would help to prepare for a presentation when we're in person, um, that we can bring data that answers specific questions, um, that would be really helpful as well.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. This is, um, this is pretty good. I, I did have a question and I guess I can, I can suppose I can just guess, but I was just wondering. I guess I can, I can suppose I can just guess, but I was just wondering, you know, just looking at, you know, um. We'll, we'll just say I'll take the mathematics, you know, where the. Um, the difference between the national average and um or, or the. The national normals and, and, and our average. Um, would you say that's a, a pretty big gap?
The, um, the end during the pandemic is, is a decent sized gap. It's significant. You know, you would, you would look at that. Um, but prior to that, no, that the lines are trending very consistently, um, very close to the national norms. Um, and even then, if you, if you see the intervals on this graph, um, the, the top interval, like the top right red dot in that math chart. Is it an RIT score of 225? And then the top blue dot at the very right-hand side for Wells is over 200. So it's, it's within 20 points in an RIT score. Um, it's not 50 points. It's not 70 points. Um, it's still a fairly close interval. Um, so it's low. And, and what we want to see in the coming school year is we're going to be looking for that gap to close and for it to move closer together. Um, but it's, if you actually look like even though the lines, like they're very parallel. Um, which shows you that again, our, our kids are pretty much mirroring the national norm. They may just be a little bit, a little bit lower. And nationally, we saw math scores. Um, be lower than reading scores across the board for students during remote instruction. Um, Latin during the last school year and coming into this school year trying to catch up. Um, MAP actually, MAP had made some predictions about what they thought it was going to be based on normal summer slide data. The, the learning loss we see over the summer with students. Um, and we're well above those. And I, I think that that's just a credit to our teachers and the hard, hard work that they put in. Last spring and all throughout this school year, both, both by being in person with the students. Um, and by working as hard as they did to make sure that, that kids didn't drop. Um, we're seeing much more significant gaps across the country in MAP data. Um, for districts where in-person instruction was not as robust and remote instruction was not as robust. So. Um, it's something that we'll monitor, but it's, it's still fairly close.
All right. Thank, thank you. And that's what I was curious is, is that gap, I mean, is that significant? And you're saying it's, you know, 20, 20 points isn't, isn't that much?
Yeah, I mean, it's again, significant enough that we're going to monitor it closely and, and watch what happens. Um, but it's, it's not going to be, um, you know, something that is on a dire um outcome. That, that shows some, some significant challenge. It's, it's just a gap.
Thank you. Meredith?
So, so the data um at that time period that we're talking about. Um. Is um, the red is, was formulated when like, because you're saying that nationally we've seen a dip. For everybody. So that data is not in sync. You know, that data was not collected in the fall of 21. It was collected.
No. It was collected in the fall of 2020, pre-pandemic.
Okay.
Yep. So those are pre-pandemic norms um that are set not, that does not, it does not reflect a gap between. Um, what the last year's norms would have been and what our students' norms would have been. It's the norms they set before the pandemic.
So if we were to actually see national comparisons, we're likely right in the right place.
Absolutely. We're, we're high on the national comparison. Many of the national comparisons show bigger, much, much bigger gaps.
And my understanding of these uh graphs in general are that the important part is that they continue to go up.
Yes.
That, that's the most important part. It's not so much that there are 10 or 15 points up or down. Okay, thanks.
Yes. And actually, as students get older, they, they, they start to, the rate of increase slows down.
Yeah, flattens.
Always what you see um as students get into like the middle school grades in particular. And then through high school, it just, the curve starts to flatten out and be less, less of a 45-degree angle.
Right. Thank you.
Courtney?
Um, so I have a couple of questions. So the first is, would that, would that mean that the norms are more of expectations versus like an average? Is that right?
Well, yeah. So what they do is they take the, the national performance of students and they average it and that becomes the norm.
Okay. So the, the norms would be historical averages and that's why they're not, um, they were not adjusted for the pandemic.
Yeah, they only re-norm every few years. Like they had a set of norms from 2015. What was the last time they set the norms? And then they just redid them in the fall of 2020. Um, and reset the norms and what, where they thought kids should be. Um, but obviously that, that doesn't take into account the pandemic. So it's not post-pandemic norms. It's pre-pandemic norms.
Okay. Then the second question I had was, do these numbers include IEP kiddos?
Yes, these are all students.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Amanda?
Um, I just have two questions. One is, Lisa, can you tell me um where that blue dot is like spring of 18? Is that like 205-ish?
Uh, in which subject area, Amanda? Sorry? In math? Um, yeah, it's probably, the blue dot is probably somewhere around there, 203, 205. Yeah.
And in spring of 21, I'm sorry, it's just hard for me to zoom it. In spring of 21, is it about the same?
Yep, it's about the same.
Okay. And in Middletown, um, the kiddos for four, five and six. Did Wells and Middletown have the same setup for those three years? Were, were those the combined classes? For both schools or were they combined in younger grades in Middletown or?
Uh, honestly, I couldn't answer that question off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and look at rosters, but maybe Rick can.
I think uh you're talking three years ago?
Yeah, I'm just talking like, yeah.
Fourth, fifth, sixth.
Twenty, like fourth, fifth, sixth were your kids in combined classes those years as well?
They were. It could have been a, a different like a combined fifth and sixth and a straight fourth. Where the last two years, we've had a combined fourth and fifth and a straight six.
Okay. Yeah, I was just looking at how from 18 to 21, the, even though there was a little increase and I understand the pandemic, but. The overall is still kind of the same number. So that was just interesting to me.
For the fall, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. From the, between winter and spring of 18 to spring of 21, the ending result is pretty much the same.
Sorry, say that one more time for me.
Sorry. Um, so between winter and spring of 18, if they were like 203. And then spring of 21, they're like 205. So in those three years. Even though there was the pandemic, there was still a two-point overall average growth, which just seems like two points isn't much for three years.
Yeah, it's probably closer to five points, but um it, it's the, the other thing we try and be careful of. And it's, it's very, it's tricky to see it on this because they're so close together, but um. We try, usually when we're trying to look at trends, we look either fall to fall or spring to spring. Um, and the reason for that is summer slide. And so what you see in our data and it's, you can see it a little bit in these charts, but um if we increase the interval, you would see it more. Um, is that pretty much ev, between spring and fall, our scores drop almost every year and almost every subject and almost every grade. Um, and that's a term that like education people call the summer slide. Um, and it's expected learning loss. Uh, and that is because we don't have school. And um we see in our data all the time that scores drop um from spring to fall. And in, in our case, we don't have a spring score um for 2020. Um, which is unfortunate because if you actually look at the line from fall and winter, you know, it was, it was trending up. Um, and you might, you might be surprised at what you see there in the spring even with remote. Um, but then it just goes back to that fall. So you would expect the fall 21 score to be lower than the spring of 20 score. Um, but yeah, it's, I mean, they're close. We definitely had some significant um slowdown during the pandemic that we're going to need to work on for, for a while still.
So Lisa, just to add to it without, I mean, this really reflects the whole recovery plan. So what we're trying to cover, the social emotional. Uh, attendance and uh the academics. So I mean, it's pretty evident there. What happened, the impact of. On students during that time. So. Especially on math. I mean, that's.
Any other questions?
I have one more quick question. So um. You mentioned that the norm is recalculated every couple of years. So when would you know how we compared to the norm for our pandemic year?
Um, that's a great question. Probably there, I'm sure that they're going to work on some kind of special report or statement around it. Um, once they have time to process all the data from last year. So we may not have easy norms to compare it to, but MAP is usually great about. Um, putting out projections. The, the challenge with using, I don't think we'll spend a lot of time using them though. And, and the reason for that is that the majority of the country was not in person during the pandemic. At, at, for the majority of the last 18 months. And Vermont was really an exception compared to most other states in our country. Um, so those norms would not really be relevant for us. Um, because our instructional model was in person and in person for, again, the majority of our students who were in person. Um, you would expect to see higher performance than, than remote students. So. And then we're, we're going to spend our time continuing to look at the data that we get in the coming year and just focusing on intervention for students. And how do we make sure that we're catching anybody up who's got gaps and, and focusing our resources on that? Rather than comparing ourselves to national norms won't, they won't tell us really the picture of Vermont uh in a way that's going to be useful, I don't think.
Thank you. That makes sense.
All right. Well, thank you, Lisa, um, for, for bringing this. And I think that um. It might actually, um, you know, be worth looking at, um. You know, all grades um across the board too. Um, you know, just to kind of get a sense of. Of how much growth there is. And I, I understand the um, the whole econ, or the recovery part. Of it, you know, obviously we're going to see um some of that regression, but um I think uh. We talked about. Looking at this kind of data last year as well, but with the pandemic, it just. Didn't make sense. So um, but again, thank you. Um, and um. If, if you have any other further questions, uh specifically, uh you can reach out to, to Lisa, I'd say.
Absolutely. My pleasure. I can really, now that we have a district data manager, things like this are going to be a lot easier for us to pull together. Because Chris and I have support and someone who can access these systems and help us prepare presentations. So if there are, again, specific things you want to look at, you know, specific questions that you want to ask. I always think it's about the question when you're looking at data because data can tell you any story you want it to tell, right? So you, you really have to, what is it that we're trying to get at? And, and understanding what it is that people want to know and want to look at really well. Um, so that we can bring data that really tries to address that and provide information in a comprehensive way. Um, so yeah, happy to talk through any kind of questions or things like that and try and prepare some, some good presentations while we have the luxury of the. Data manager resource at our disposal.
Yeah, it's, it's some of the stuff we've looked at before, you know, they were, you know, bar charts, you know, they weren't. You know, this uh, this dot where, you know, you've, you've got those gaps. It's kind of hard to tell. There's an actual number. In the bars and then there's pie chart. So you know, how it's presented is, you know, and also um can show a lot. And, and uh even the, given the type of test as well. So.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so now this uh pre-K. Parent request. Uh, did everyone have a chance to read that over?
Yes.
Yep, this is Ryan. I read it.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh. So yeah, this, this came to me this afternoon as well. Um. And I'll, I'll just say, I didn't realize we had. This in place about um. Uh, not allowing outside um. GRCSU participation, the pre-K. Um.
So Eric, I'll, I'll clarify. So in speaking with Nancy McGill, uh, who was our outgoing early coordinator um back in the spring. Uh, she had informed me that's been past practice that they have not allowed. Um, any students outside of the GRCSU to access our pre-K programs. It's been kind of past practice. Uh, we currently have a waitlist in our GS, GRCSU, uh, GRCSU families who do not have access to a pre-K. Programs. And that's one of the things we did discuss, whether we want to open up our pre-K programs to GRCSU families. Uh, so but uh, so like I said, it's been past practice that uh staff, um, staff members of, you know, particularly without a district have not been allowed to, you know. To bring their students uh into pre-K or other grades. So. That's, like I said, that's, you know, the early coordinator informed me that and it also informed this individual as well back in the spring.
So Chris, does that mean that you're saying we have a waitlist for this coming school year?
So I, so in talking with uh Nancy, and I know that Rick and Liz have been part of this discussion as well, but uh. We have, in some of our schools, we may have openings, but in other schools, we have waitlists. And so. Uh, the discussion we have is as we have waitlists, say, within our GRCS, GRCSU. And other buildings, do we provide those GRCSU families with access to a GRCSU pre-K? Um, in the past, you know, like I said, you know, what's been told to me that has not always been the past practice. That let's say there's a family who is outside of, say, Wells Springs. Um, let's say a Proctor family, just for argument's sake, uh, and they're on a waitlist. At Proctor Elementary, but uh say Middletown or, or uh has openings, but that family would not have access to that Middletown spot. Uh, so they would stay on the Proctor waitlist. So, and you know, you know, they said according to Nancy, they said, you know, in the pa, past practice has been that they have not allowed. Uh, out-of-district uh students to access pre-K programs. So I know Eric.
That's really confu, really confusing because I thought we didn't designate our pre-K area. So we would allow. Anybody to come use our pre-K.
I'm explaining, they, they said, this is what our coordinator said has been past practice. So I think what. Um, we have to do is, you know, I said with this, if, if you want to allow that, I said that we'll have an SU. Uh, repercussion in terms of that becomes our SU policy in terms that we will allow for that flexibility. I, I, like I said, I'm not opposed to it one way or another, but I think it's, you know, an SU discussion because we'll have an impact. If we make a decision here, then uh what that does at Rutland Town and at Corey Valley as well.
And when you say past practice, is that with Rutland South before we merged?
Uh, I, they said I, I'm not, I think it's just during the merger from what the discussion was that what we've had that. Since the merger, we have not allowed, because you did cite GRCSU, uh, non-GRCSU families.
Wow.
Yeah, I, I was under the same impression that with universal pre-K.
Yeah.
Um, you can choose any pre-K you want, uh, as long as. Um, there's room. You know, my question is, is um, I mean, could um. Could there be, I guess, legal action for saying no? That would be my first question, I guess.
Yeah. I don't understand.
We don't have a full capacity for next year for Wells, do we? No.
So not at this time, I should say.
Okay.
Enrollment changes throughout the summer, but at this point, we have, we have space for just what Chris has mentioned.
I was under the impression that if there is a waiting list for that school, then I could understand not letting that child attend. But if there's open spot in Wells in the pre-K program, I would think that would be all right.
I agree. I think we should, you know, help the teachers out that are there. I feel like.
Those half-day pre-K programs that some schools do are extremely challenging for, for working families. I know that's nothing that we have control over, but for a pre-K program to start and go from 12 to three is, is definitely a challenge.
I mean, we very specifically does, did not choose to designate because of this, so that we could allow teachers, staff to, if there is room, bring their students. I, I'm, I'm not understanding this past practice thing at all.
Liz, your kiddos went to Wells, didn't they?
Uh, my daughter did this past year, but we're GRCSU resident, like we live within the supervisory union.
Gotcha.
I mean, is there an actual policy or is this past practice?
It, I've been looking for policy. I do not see anything in writing to see the past practice. And I think we're, um, the only concern that I would have is just if we have GRCSU families that do not have access or are, would lose out on a spot because we are allowing non-GRCSU residents access to our pre-K. So I think, you know, they said, it's something for a much larger discussion. Um, in terms of if there are waitlists, do we, say, if, you know, if there are, say, five slots available between Middletown and Wells, do we open that up to our GRCSU families first for right, uh, right to refusal? Or do we just go right to whoever wants that or this particular case? I know that there is a concern, um, and it's something which has been discussed, uh, some, some of the other boards, is whether or not we allow children of staff members to attend our schools. But that's a, that's a, that's a slippery slope. Yes. And that's a, that's a much different discussion than, uh, I think a Universal pre-K, Act 166.
Amanda?
Would anybody, I, I guess I'm thinking we could offer this to her to bring her son to preschool and we could just clearly say, like, absolutely, he is welcome. However, if at some point a GRCSU family needs the spot, unfortunately, he will be pushed back. I think that she is a very understanding person. And I, I don't feel that we would really run into somebody coming and having to ask him to leave. But maybe that would protect us per se, if we said he could come as long as it's not taking the spot of a GRCSU member. I, maybe we could, I don't know, I.
I think we need to fully understand what our, our obligation is as, um, how we have set up Universal pre-K. I, I think it's a legal issue. I, I really do not believe that we have a choice. I, I believe she's allowed to bring, if we have space, she's allowed to bring her, her student. I don't think it matters if it's inside or outside our supervisory union.
That's what I thought too.
Is that something we can ask Chris?
I, I sent Chris an email earlier today about trying to discuss this. We're going to have a phone call for tomorrow to discuss this and a couple of other things.
Not to insert myself in your board conversation, but since I'm here, um, I know too with Act 166, it's around accessing 10 hours of pre-K education. We are choosing voluntarily to provide more than that in our programs. And they're also structured differently than most of the 10-hour programs. Most of the 10-hour programs like don't have rest time or they, they try to arrange it so that the kids get the, the most benefit from the daytime, that they're there the five, the 10 hours. And we have all day with our kids, so our schedules look a little bit different, which we've run into issues of licensing in previous programs where licensing wants your program to look like a five-hour day program and ours don't. So it's not an easy checkbox for the people who come to look at ours. But I, I do believe that the choice in Universal pre-K under Act 166 is around choice for a 10-hour program. And, and so we, that legally, we would, we would need to provide 10 hours of programming if we had space. And your board has the right to designate a region under Act 166 for.
Which we chose not to do.
Right, which towns. And I'll also, and I, I don't remember when that was historically, Meredith, and you might better than, than I at this point. But all the, the 166 region designation that we did prior to our merger dissolved when we merged.
No, we did it since the merger because, uh, Middletown did not designate previously. Or we did rather designate previously. And it was a new thing for us to say, okay, anybody can come. It was something Deborah, I sort of mandated, but you know, we.
I remember that same for Wells.
Yep.
Yep. So Chris, we might be able to find that in the board meeting minutes.
I'll look it up.
Yeah, I believe that, um, well, I mean, first of all, this, this, um, you know, this was addressed to the board back in May and, and you know, it's coming to us now. And I would imagine that, uh, you know, she wanted to, you know, at least try and plan and, you know, for next year. So, um, I, I guess, you know, if we had this, you know, earlier, it, um, if the board had to, um, you know, come up with a plan or a policy or something like that to help address this, you know, I think that would be beneficial in the long term because, you know, once, once we open that door, you know, it, it'll, it can set a precedent, which, you know, I, I totally agree that, you know, allowing, um, you know, staff to have, um, their students, you know, uh, come to the school. I think that, that's, that's great, but, uh, um, we don't have, we don't have this like outline. We just have this old past practice. So.
Yeah, I don't like the past practice at all.
It's nothing that's like, there's no, I don't know, I guess, direction to go. So now we're stuck in this decision of, you know, to do it or not. And I guess, uh, as Lisa said, with the 10 hours of, um, you know, and then we have a full pre-K program, where does that extra funding come from? Is she going to pay it? Is, or if, if they say, yes, I will, and then they don't, like, who's, who's accountable for that? So, you know, just kind of leave some more questions.
Her letter indicated that she was, had, had funding in, uh, in mind that she was going to explain to us.
And I just wanted to apologize. I had intended for this to come in June. So I apologize that it's a month in addition to the time that it had been sent. So just wanted to make sure that that was clarified for you.
And, you know, this past practices, is it really realistic that somebody in Rutland Town, if their pre-K is filled, are going to send their kids to Wells or Middletown?
Depends on where they work. Depends on where they work and what they're, so I guess I, I don't know. You're right, you're right, Meredith. I mean, you're right. You're asking some very good questions. I think the same questions we've asked as well. I think it's one where from, like I said, is it, you know, there's a lot of common sense here. But I think we just, we have to, you know, if we're, if we're going to make that decision, I think we just need to make a decision and move forward with, with what we're, what we're wanting to do.
Liz, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Do you remember when you came to us for your daughter? Because I'm, I'm vaguely remembering that when you came to us, and I can't remember when that was, that Clarence then said after that we should put something in place at that point, allowing another student to come. And I thought that in that meeting, we did something.
I had, I think, brought it back up in March as a potential for my daughter for this upcoming year. But she has a spot where she will be attending a different program. I don't recall any further conversation that Clarence had had, but it wasn't terribly long ago that I had asked, brought it to you guys for next school year.
So what is the, Chris, what do you think the best way to handle this is then? Like I, I don't know. I don't, I don't think there's any reason she shouldn't be able to bring her, but I, bring him. But I agree that it is the legal piece. So how do you feel we should quickly resolve this before the start of the school year? Do you have any ideas?
Well, I, I think one, there are a couple of issues here. I mean, we look at, uh, there's the 10 hours, which we are far exceeding the 10 hours in terms of what we're doing, the, you know, what we're offering. You know, so there's that minimum there. But my only concern would be the fact that is, it is, this is an, you know, SU. Because, you know, SU decision in terms of, you know, but if we're looking at the Universal Act, if we're going to sit there and say that our families have option to move, you know, to access whatever program they want, which is, you know, then we really have to be very careful with that. Like I said, I'm not trying to deny, I understand, as I read the letter, I understand exactly where this individual is coming from, from a parent perspective, from a, you know, that, and the difficulties and how this would allow her to still, you know, be employed, but also, you know, do what's best for their, their kids. I get it. And I just want to make sure that the decision we make is one that, uh, that we're good with and as well as the SU is good with, because the minute we make this determination, then it will be setting a bit of a precedent, which I'm not, I don't have a problem with. But I think it's one where, uh, the, you know, Rutland Town or Corey Valley should be aware of this as well. And like I said, I'm not quite certain in terms of, you know, you know, the, the past practice or, you know, the, the reasons or logic or rationale behind this. You know, like I said, I'm just going with the, our, you know, early coordinator had informed me. But, you know, but also I'd recommend moving forward. We need to make a decision one way or another in terms of whether we're going to allow it or we're not going to continue to allow it. So I think that's what we're looking for.
The whole SU would have to agree on the same thing? Or could we, as well as Springs, agree on something different than Rutland Town?
Well, I think if we're looking at, if, you know, it goes back to, I just want to talk about Chris, about our obligations. If, if, you know, we look at Universal, that anybody has access to pre-K, you know, uh, then it will have SU implications, you know, for us. But, but at the same time, is if we decide that we are going to allow a staff member at Wells Springs to, um, to bring their out-of-district, you know, children into a pre-K program, but yet another board then decides to say no, still under the same SU, it might be more problematic. So.
So I, was that your concern with Chris? The legalities revolving around this potentially, or, I mean, are you?
My, my concerns are, I think we just want to make, you know, is either yes, we, you know, we just, we allow for this to happen within our pre-K, or if we say no, we just want to make sure that we, you know, legally, we are, we're in a position where we can restrict access, you know? I mean, regardless of past practice, I just want to double check that to make sure that that is something that we as an SU can do. As if they say that, you know, we will, um, uh, limit our pre-K to just, you know, GRCSU families.
Would it be possible for us to look into this for a bit and have a quick separate meeting next week so that we can have an answer sooner rather than later for her?
Sure. I mean, I, they said I could have a conversation with Chris tomorrow and then, uh, you know, we just have to call a special meeting. We'd have to have, just all I need is 24 hours to warn that.
Well, it depends on whether or not you're going to have to talk to the other boards about it. If Chris says, you know, something to the effect that, yes, 10 hours is fine, but if you go for the full thing, then your entire SU has to agree. Then, you know, it's going to take more than a week.
I, I think it might be wise to put this on the GRCSU agendas, like bring this to the SU as well. Because these other boards, um, you know, they should probably know that this is coming to the Wells Springs Board and that, you know, it could have an effect, honestly. You know, I, I'd hate to, you know, delay this decision any longer, but, um, that's just my thought on it. You know, it, it may, it may turn into a longer discussion. I don't know, but, uh, any other thoughts on that?
Can we make a one-year exception or six-month exception to give her a short answer? And then just tell her straight up, like if another family comes, then unfortunately, he won't be able to, the spot is not guaranteed for the full school year?
I think the first, the first thing that has to happen is you need to talk to Chris about this, Chris Leopold, and see what our next step is based on what he has to say.
I support that.
Hopefully it'll be only a week or two, but you know, it could be a whole month.
I mean, in the meantime, we could reach out to her and let her know that we're, you know, we're working on it and we'll be back in touch with her once we, once we know. But I think it's better to go through all the bases before we just say yes.
I agree. Yeah, Liz, can you, can we nominate you to let her know?
Yes, I can do that for you.
Could always make a decision at the retreat as well. So. All right. Is that the consensus of the board is to see what Chris Leopold says and, and we'll come back and make a decision at a later date.
I would agree with that. Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so. I think we're just kind of looking for direction and.
Yep.
Yeah. If we were to say no or, or yes, then that would probably require a motion.
And I'll provide you an update as soon as I hear, uh, speak to Chris. We just won't be able to discuss it via email, so.
Correct. All right. Thank you, Chris and Liz. All right. Uh, if there's a, no other further discussion on that, uh, we do have a, an executive session. But before we do, we can quickly talk about future meetings really quick. We have the board retreat next in two weeks. And, um, well, first of all, is that okay with everyone? We, we can just talk about our future meetings really quick and then move into executive session. We, we can just talk about uh, our future meetings really quick and then move into executive session. Um. For the retreat, so we, we do have that set in place at 4:30. It's going to be in Middletown Springs. Uh, as we discussed uh, uh, last month, and we do have a facilitator come, coming. Uh, Kathy um, Latender. I don't know if I pronounced her last name right.
You did.
So, uh, so she's coming and she's going to have a, a facilitation on board goals and. And um, I think it's just going to be a, a, a good get together and we'll have food, which leads me into, uh, everyone should have got a, um. Email from Meredith on um. What? To eat. Oh, there it is. Um. Honestly, I didn't have a chance. I just kind of read through it and just saw five different menus on here, but. Uh, so what does everyone think on, on this? So, um. We briefly kind of talked about. Um. How many people we thought we'd need to feed? And um. And I guess the next is the what, you know? Meredith, did you want to? Add any more to that?
Uh, so basically I told her to put together some um, menu choices that would incorporate sort of a vegetarian. And we decided to go with the chicken for a meat thing and um. This is what she put together uh, for um, ideas. Obviously. We can say no to all these and do something completely different, um, or we could choose one or change one, um. They are around 25 bucks a person and um, we, you know, we're talking 15. 15 to 20 people, so we might want to get more specific about that number if we do choose to go with Corey. Yeah.
I think menu three looks delicious.
Yeah, I thought three or five looks amazing.
Same.
Whatever the one with the grilled chicken was with the pesto and tomato, I think it was three. Looks like it would kind of accommodate everyone.
I'm not for anything. Whatever you guys want, I'm, I'm fine with. I'll probably eat it.
Maybe if anyone has any special requests or allergies or anything, they could just send you a email to make sure.
Do we have any idea about the number of people? I mean, are we inviting families, spouses? What, what are we there? I know. Liz and Rick are, and Chris are both all involved, which I think, right? Okay.
Yeah. Um. I guess, you know, my thought on, on the retreat is that um, you know, it's more centralized around just. You know, uh, you know, just doing some of that work of the board. Um. You know, I, I believe. Was it Ryan said? Someone said that they might have to bring family. Um.
Yeah, I may have to bring my kids depending.
Yeah.
It's at 4:30, but um, I could certainly try to make some other arrangements if.
No, no.
They probably play on the playground the whole time and not really care what we're doing, so.
Yeah, no, I wasn't suggesting that. I just, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, obviously, you know, if, if. You, you want to bring uh, your kids, that's perfectly fine with me. I just thought that it's not like our annual meeting where we're inviting the community to. Type thing, you know, uh, that, that's my thought around this. It's, it's going to be centralized around just um. Board work. Um. So what are other, other people's thoughts on? I guess. Meredith's question was how many people?
Well, so yeah, I, I know, I think we, we've done it different ways where we've had the board work from. So you need to kind of pick an end time for when the food should arrive. Um, so is this going to be two hour, you know, if we're starting at 4:30, I think two hours is about as long as you. Probably want to make this. I don't know if you discussed that with Kathy. Um. Uh, and then you choose to invite kids and or spouses, depending on how you want to do that or not. Um.
For me personally, it would just be me. That's just my personal.
It would also just be me. Um, my kids and Kyle would not be coming, so I would be one.
Yeah, Ryan, I was going to offer my daughter to babysit if you want. Um.
That would be great. I, I mean, I don't anticipate my husband coming because he would be working. Otherwise I would just leave them with him, so. Um, I'm happy to, like I said, try to find someone. I just, it sounded like when we first started talking about it, it was. A family type of event, but I'm definitely fine either way. And I'll take you up on the babysitter, Meredith.
Yeah, um, she's at Theater in the Woods that day, so she'd be done, um, I think by 4:30, so.
That would be great.
Yeah. Definitely. So we want to stick to then just. Then that's nine of us? Sorry, Lisa. I don't know that you want to come.
Well.
Guys all the time.
I. Is it 11 if we do George and?
It'd be 10, I guess.
What is our, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank.
Jody.
Jody.
Yeah.
It'd be seven, eight, 10, yeah. 10 and then Kathy?
11, yeah.
Yeah, I think that would, that would cover it. I don't know.
Okay. So you want number three for 11? At what time?
5:30 in the middle.
Oh, well, since we're not having other people, we could do a break and have dinner and finish up.
That's what I was thinking. Um, instead of trying to. Go through all the facilitation stuff and then trying to eat at like, you know, six or seven or whatever, so. My thought was to have a break probably around six. But we hadn't talked about that, but that was just something I was thinking about. Um. I suppose, um. Well, I guess for now, we'll just decide, we decided how many people and what menu. We can, we. We can figure out the when. You know, to be delivered. Once we figure out like the agenda, I guess, is what I'm getting at, like. Cause I don't want to say. Let's figure on this time and then, you know, it can come up.
And I, I think most of the stuff she has, I forget what that menu exactly looks like, but um. She has a hot box and so, you know, she can just drop it and the actual.
Oh.
Exact time would be when we would be ready for it. So I, you know, we, we could put it out. Not like she's going to be serving it.
Right, okay. Yeah, that's similar to what, um, you know, what happened at the last retreat.
Yeah. Yep, okay. We have a general time of. Six, six o'clock?
Yeah, let's do six. Call it good.
And I, I did, uh, I said we, we would deal with drinks on our own. Um. If you want, well, you know, we can put, put together a cooler full of seltzers and those or something or. I don't know if people want coffee at that time of night, but.
True.
Or you could bring your own drinks.
Yeah.
I was going to say that could be easier. Everybody just bring their own drink.
Okay.
I'm good with my water bottle.
Alright, yeah.
Same here.
Super. That makes it easier.
It does. Thank you, Meredith.
Rick, what do, Rick, what do we have for like utensils and stuff? Should we plan to do paper plates and?
Um.
Or can we?
We have plates, um. I think washing, I, I guess to make it easy. Um. Do paper plates and, and I'll do regular, I'll find the regular silverware and I'll just bring it home to wash it. No, we're not.
Okay. Alright then, uh. We'll just get some paper plates. And so we're going to go with menu number three?
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
Looks good to me.
Perfect. Alright, done.
Do you have to pick up the plates or is that something that you have covered or? I'm happy to get them if you guys need.
Perfect.
Meredith, not to be difficult, but I'm going to be difficult. Would it be possible to get a chicken without pesto? I, I can't have pesto.
Oh, no, we, we can do that for sure.
Okay, I, okay. Thank you.
Could she do it just like on the side maybe the?
Yeah, I'm sure she'll do, do a portion of the chicken on the side. But do you want, you're okay with all the other stuff on it?
It sounds, it sounds great, yep.
Okay.
Sounds good, so.
One, one no pesto. Okay.
Alright, now that we got that squared away.
Eric, there's, well, okay, go with Meredith. I, I have one more thing before I go to executive session about the pre-K, just out of thought, so.
Okay, this is just one last item on this in terms of billing. Should I, I'll have her just present an invoice and. We'll give that to you. Is that? When you leave?
Sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. So next, uh, real quick about pre-K, so next Tuesday, Eric, uh, I think you, Lynette, Lisa, myself are going to meet to discuss. Um, some other things, so we can put this pre-K on the dock, because I, I've been doing a little research, you know, here and there, but I do believe. Schools are not required to accept. Out of district students. Uh, but they have to have some, I think it'd be good for us to have something in writing about whether we do or we don't. And I think that's where, uh, and I think maybe next week we can, and I'll confirm that with Chris tomorrow. But I, I think it'd be wise for us to decide whether or not that would be a local district decision. Or if an SU decision should be made, and that could be something which we could be discussed on the 28th. Um, at the SU level, so I could, I, I'll talk with Chris about that, but I, I know that. It, it just kind of go back and forth, I, it, it, texting other superintendents as well, uh, just in the past couple of minutes, just to confirm. That it is a, it, it didn't, we're not required to accept. Students from outside of our district in, in a school. Qualified uh, pre-K program. We can if, you know, but we're not, we're not required to. So, and we'll can, I guess I'll confirm that with Chris and then I think next Tuesday we can then. Uh, decide, because it, it, it becomes, if like Rutland and Wells, like if Lynette, Lisa feel that. Hey, you know, let's just, you know, that should be a local district decision, they're okay with that, then we can maybe quickly try to. Schedule a special meeting just to quickly discuss and have. Um, very similar to what we did with tuition, just have wording in place that we could then. Kind of tuck in as a Wellspring policy that this is how we want to handle. Um, out of district pre-K that, if, if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Um. And that was a big question from, you know, is can we say no, you know? Not like want to, but you know, just to, just to know all the information before making a decision like this is. Um, I think is important.
From my understanding, we have, we have the, we're not required to. Accept. Uh, an out of district in our, in a school qualified pre-K program, but we can if we, if we. If, you know, as a district or as an SU uh, opt to do that, we can.
Okay.
But like I said, I'll, I'll, I'll meet with Chris tomorrow, we'll confirm that and then. At our meeting with the executive committee on Tuesday, we can discuss and then we can. But like I said, if I find information else, uh, like I said, I'll share it with the, the board. Obviously we can't discuss, as I said before, but. Just to, you know, for your own information.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Chris. Um. Alright, for the August 4th meeting, um. Uh, I, I, I'm assuming this still stands, Chris, but um. Chris tried to get Susan Holson to come to the uh, retreat uh, on the 21st as another facilitator. Uh, to go over, you know, just the board roles and responsibilities. Uh, she couldn't do it on the 21st, so she was lined up for. The August 4th meeting. So that's why that's a, that's kind of on the agenda is, uh, we diversely kind of talk about, um. Maybe just taking a break and canceling it. However, if we did, then we wouldn't have a meeting before school starts. And, you know, looking back, you know, hindsight, probably should have incorporated, uh. This, uh, you know, maybe back thinking about, you know, but with everything, um, going on, I guess. Um. I don't know if, um, we'd want to, you know, just skip that meeting. So what are everyone's thoughts on it? Because I think that, um, we have, uh. We have a lot of new members on the board and I think, uh, you know, someone from the V S V A, um. Uh, you know, coming to the meeting, uh, might actually have a, you know. Good informative positive impact.
I'm not familiar with how the retreat goes, um, so my thought would be if, if we discuss something at the retreat. That we would then need to discuss publicly, would it be in our best interest to keep that meeting? In case something like that needs to be added to the agenda to go over before school does start.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I mean, I, I guess I don't know either. I, I, I was assuming if something came up at the retreat. That then we all thought, wow, that's a great idea. And it was something that we wanted to move to put in place. Before school starts, we would want a meeting before school to do that, since the retreat is not a public meeting.
Well, the retreat is a public meeting. It's still.
Like.
Yeah, I mean, as far as open meeting law goes, um, if the public, we still have to post an agenda, we still have to follow open meeting law. And so if, um, we are. Um. If the, if the public came to the retreat and they just wanted to sit and watch, they could. So, um, there's nothing that, uh, excludes the, the public from any of our meetings.
And, and it's goal setting, it isn't, I. Wouldn't tend to come up with a thing that you would be putting in place. It's a long range. Uh, look at what's going on and, and what we would like to continue doing going forward. It's not necessarily just about the school, if that makes sense.
Yeah, my main question was, uh, and, and Chris, I mean, can Susan still on for the fourth, right?
Yes, and I can reach out to see if she can move that date if you, if you want, it's up to you, so. Um, I, I would. Um, I I would, and I was gonna talk about this later, I would like to really look at, you know, next summer. Looking at July, just July is a very busy time for a lot of people and, but I just uh. In other district I've worked at, where we just didn't have board meetings in July. Um, and just having a time, just, you know, that's usually the the best month to take off, to be honest, because, you know, I said August, you're right for school. July is typically a slow period, uh, you may have a retreat plan, but. Um, but I I would, you know, recommend us, you know, looking at for, you know, next summer, really. Uh. You know, not having a board meeting in July, looking at, you know, having a retreat during that time or something else along those lines, but. But I I can reach out to Susan to see if she can move things around. She has some flexibility at the beginning of the year. Um, but uh, like I said, it's just, I take the timing with start of school and uh, as of right now, things are looking. Okay, you know, but uh. Uh, you know, I don't anticipate anything between now and, you know, August fourth, but you don't, you don't know.
Yeah, exactly. Uh. Again, I. I I'm. I don't have a problem. I I think this is just, you know, more work the board can do outside of a normal. School year where, you know, once we start back up in the fall, we're gonna be talking about budgets and and all that stuff. Um, so. If, basically. If the if the board doesn't want, you know, to do that, I'm fine, you know, I just, that's just my opinion. And, you know, we can always resque- reschedule, but if we are gonna have an August fourth me- meeting. And we're gonna schedule someone to come out. And and then we don't have a quorum, um, that wouldn't be good, so.
Uh, Eric, I think you're right. I would rather. Try to schedule Susan in September when I know that everyone's gonna be there, because I do think it's important, particularly. Uh, you know, given the makeup of our board, you know, myself included, that, you know, we have a lot of new members or relatively new members. Uh, and I think as you're doing board work, it's important for, you know, majority of the board to be there, and I, I think if it's. If in August, like you said, if we know that we may be missing two or three individuals. Uh, it might make more sense for us to look to, even if we have a meet on the fourth, we can even. Pushing Susan back to September and if we need, would need to, but.
Okay. Uh, what are other people's thoughts on this?
I know I can't be there in person on the fourth. I was planning on being remote, so um. Which may work with this, I'm not sure.
I vote for not doing an August meeting. Just because I feel like there's a lot going on between now and then. But that's just my personal.
Okay.
I'd probably go with that as well, just because we're gonna be all together in a couple weeks and there is kind of a lot going on. Um, I think for everybody in the summertime. But next summer, I vote we maybe skip the July one instead, because July is a lot crazier too.
All right, Amanda?
I agree with that.
I am fine to not have a meeting or to have a meeting. If we have a meeting, I can make it. If we don't and take some time off, then time off is great too.
Okay. Um.
Eric, and if there's a, if something crazy happens, you know, then we we can call. You know, find a time in August, like later on, for an emergency meeting, you know, to convene the board. If we would need to, so.
Okay, well, that sounds good. We'll do that. Um, we'll just go ahead and if. If everyone is in agreement, we'll just go ahead and skip the August meeting, take a break. And uh, and then um. We'll have our. Possibly potentially have Susan come in September. Correct?
I'll reach out to her tomorrow. I'll send a email tonight when I get home.
All right. Sounds good. Does that? For everyone? Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Great. Yeah, I know in the past, like the SU has always just skipped July meetings um, for a time. Um, obviously, last month we didn't, but.
We used to skip December meetings too.
Yep. Yeah, once the budget got passed.
Yeah.
It was always during uh Christmas break. All right, so we won't have an August fourth meeting. There, that's.
Can you clarify what um, what's it is that Susan is doing?
Uh, yeah, um. Well, she's a part of the V S B A. She's a. Basically gonna come out and just have a facilitation on board roles and responsibilities. Um. And all actuality, I mean, if you go to the V S B A's website, I mean, you can read about all this. They've got videos. Uh, but I think this is a little bit more uh engaged, where, I mean, you can ask pointed questions and. And it might get a little bit more specific. And um. I don't know, I've I've never done this before with her. This is just, you know, what I think what would happen, but. I think it uh, it would be um. I think it would, it would be a good thing. Um, I mean. Even if, even for experienced board members, there's still always that opportunity to say, to ask a question for. Um, you know.
Even attended uh new board members uh functions as a, you know, seven-year veteran. Now ten or more. Um. And there is always something new to learn, because you're looking at it with a different pair of eyes, but we ought to make sure that our newest. Members all are aware of the V S B A as a resource to look at new member info. I don't know, uh, obviously, we can send them a link, but um, that might be helpful.
Yeah, and people should all have that, but I will make sure, I'll double check that as well. Um, and I obviously Jody will have all the information. I I already reached out to Christine, so we're gonna start that process tomorrow morning.
Yeah, I would imagine they're doing, they've had a lot of virtual new member info things that are all posted on the website now, so.
It's a great resource now, the V S B A.
Yeah, they they have their webinars. And they used to do their webinars in the evening, but now they're around noon, and those are really helpful, because. I mean, you can actually ask a question around a specific top- topic. And um. There's, you know, obviously, um, the V S B A that are are doing it and. It it's just a great resource.
Even if you can't attend them at noon, if you uh sign up for them, then you can watch them later. They'll send you links to them, so um. They're really helpful.
It is, and and we pay our dues, so our membership is.
You listen to them like a podcast.
All right, great. Okay, uh, I see Rick is about to fall asleep, so.
I was at school early today, I think so, yeah. No, I'm here, I'm here.
I know, just giving you a hard time.
Yeah.
All right, so uh. All right, so, need a motion to move an executive session for personnel? And then negotiations.
I'll make a motion to move to executive session.
Is there a second?
I'll second, it's Amanda.
Do we have to make it more definitive than just personnel? I think technically.
Um. No, I don't think so.
I I, we should specify as as much as we can without disclosing, so for. Um, like for, you know, negotiation, we have labor relations, just to discuss. Um, review like the E S B A contract, but also uh upcoming teaching negotiation, just in updates. Uh, for that, but uh the personnel, uh, I'm I'm not certain in terms of the personnel discussion there.
Yeah, I, that was, is there a personnel discussion that was on?
I didn't, I didn't put it all on there, so I I I assumed that you would put that on there, so, so if there's no personnel, we can strike personnel from the. Executive session, so we just had negotiation labor relations. Even better.
Great, sounds good. It was, must have been another carryover.
Yep. So.
All right. All those in favor moving to executive session at eight o'clock? Say aye or wave your hand.
Are we inviting Liz and Rick or? Are they?
Uh, well.
I I don't think for, I mean, I I'm not certain this information really pertains to them. It's more just updates. Oh, and then if if.
Yeah, if it was, I I thought the personnel was actually something that. Um, they needed to bring up, so yeah. Um, this is just uh, like Chris said, for negotiations, um, just information, so. Uh, they don't have to come to executive session. Cool, well, we're adding the executive session at eight fifteen by consensus, so. Uh. There is no any other lawful business, uh, motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. A motion by Meredith, second by Ryan. And all those in favor? Say aye or sign off?
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.